Of course, the vision of our district is that we believe in opportunities, achievement, and community for all. And our mission statement to support that is that the School District of Milton, in partnership with the community, prepare our students for achievement and lifetime readiness by providing opportunities for all. And on that note, we will call to order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, August 12th. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Mr. Don, are you aware of anything we need to adjust on the agenda?
No changes to the agenda. I move to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by Jennifer to approve the agenda as we have it. Does anyone have any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And our agenda is set, and the minutes would be next.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular health meeting on July 22nd, 2024, as presented.
Thank you. Tracey's motion is seconded by Ed to approve our previous meeting minutes. Does anyone have questions on those? I hear none. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? If that clearly passes, we will move down to E as vouchers.
I'll make a motion to approve general checking account vouchers, totally $1,603,815,19 cents, as presented.
Thank you. John's motion is seconded by Rick to approve our checking account vouchers, and the amount can you just enumerate? Does anyone have questions on the vouchers? See, none. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
And those who are opposed, then also clearly passes. Public comment, this is letter F. We have a couple of folks signed up to visit with us tonight, and we will take them if you order them to sign up. So I would welcome to the podium, share with us, please, your name and address, and I'll remind you that we try to hold this close to three minutes if we can. Mr. Dave Holtermann signed up first, so know your face, of course, so welcome, Dave.
All right. Again, my name is Dave Holtermann, former school board member and concerned parents from the Promising Lane. Wanted to come here tonight and talk a little bit about the referendum questions tonight. I think at a high level, we all know this, strong school sport, strong housing, supports jobs, it supports employees, it supports the future. You know this, but I wanted to make it a little bit more personal. And as a proud member of the class of 1993, I wanted to share with you some teachers that made a difference in my life. Doc Swain, for those of you who went to school here, taught biology for probably 100 years, knew everyone's parents and grandparents, and I had an amazing experience with him. From a sorority, Trix, I wasn't super excited about going to Spanish, but I learned a lot and she made me want to do it. This is for the young, Kathy Steele, Mr. Heeter, teaching history, Mr. Roberts, teaching history. I spent four years with Jim Flores, he in the woodshop, and learned a ton, and I have a ton of respect for all of these people. And the reason I mention this to you tonight is, I had the opportunity to have these people be part of my life, because we have schools that supported these people. And I know tonight you talk about we made a crossroads, and happy to make sure that our schools have the resources to continue to support teachers and the experiences that they give to our children. And again, I wanted to make it a little bit more personal, talk about people that made a difference in my life, and I know those same people, people just like them to teach today, and making sure that we support them, so they support our children is super important to me. Again, I know for those that attended the three community sessions, this issue of funding goes back to the 1990s. We went from spending two-thirds to schools and state support to just over a half today. And so the problem with state funding is a state problem, and unfortunately, we here at the local level have to figure out problems, figure out solutions, which should fix these problems. From since the beginning of 2020 to now, 243 school districts across the state have referendum for operations, doesn't improve capital referendum, just operations over cap, where the schools in the state have gone to referendum in the last four years. And the reason I come to you tonight is to talk about the importance of asking questions tonight. I know many of you have had a chance to talk, you're the finance committees, really find you were used to many issues, and I feel like the support for the questions that are out here tonight, and I think there's support in the community, support our schools. I would tell you, in understanding the problem and looking at possible solutions, the problem we have is not temporary, it's a solution. My opinion should not be temporary. If three years from now, there's still going to be funds to support the same teachers that I talked about that made a difference in my life, it's my opinion, we should go for a re recurring referendum and try to do a right, educate the community in the right decision. However, I think equally important is whatever decision is made here tonight, it needs to be a seven level decision. We need to go back to everyone that we have constituency in this community, able to say, I support this, this is the best solution we have available today. And I encourage you, as you discuss this tonight, to find a way to walk out here in a seven level, not let the question, whatever it is, tonight. I know we've spent a ton of time in the committees working on this issue, I really, really appreciate your volunteer time and see a way that, know that so much more goes into making these decisions than this attending, than just attending this meeting. So thank you for all you do, thank you for having this discussion tonight. Like I said, I wanted to share why I support being, what I think we should do, but again, if we can get a seven level, we'll tell our communities what things we need to do to support our kids, and I support as well, so thank you.
All right. Thank you. And our second speaker that I welcome to the podium is Dan McCorr.
Thank you. Dan McCorr, 4451, Redwood Drive, Janesville. I'm a Milton School District community member, and a steadfast supporter of student academic achievement, in order to unleash the potential of the individual. I respect the board's desire to do what they believe is best for the school district. Tonight, I thought the week, constructively, presented informed community members' perspective and recommendation. A few key points leading to my recommendation. Yes, the mill rate decreased since 2019, however, taxpayer says property value increased 14% faster, it's nothing behind our taxes. Tonight, the board will be recommending a 100% increase versus the operational referendum, that is, to go from $2.5 million, the current $2.5 million dollar referendum, to a $5.00 referendum, most likely in perpetuity. But even with the $5 million recurring referendum that was shared at the finance committee meeting last week, the district anticipates another $6 to $7 million fiscal cliff in four years, largely due to the $50 million operating budget growing by $2 million per year, based on annual growth expenses. What most taxpayers do not realize is, overall, Rockhoney property taxes, of which school district taxes are the highest portion, are already higher than 96% of all companies in the United States as a percentage of personal income. Additionally, taxpayers have been hit with an inflation tax, causing households to spend additional $950 on average. This, most likely, is why seven of the last eight referendums in Rockhoney have failed over the last two years. This is not as much about, this is not as much state funding issue as it is a district spending issue, particularly relative to local taxpayers' ability to pay. Today, both districts and the taxpayers must prioritize must haves versus nice to haves. Therefore, I suggest the district propose a three-year, $2.5 million non-recurring operational referendum, while pledging to the community that will quickly bring in the operating budget over the next year. The district should audit, with community input, all programs and expenses based on criteria, such as whether the program or expense will directly lead to greater student academic achievement or not. Then reassess need in year four based on current circumstances. Thank you.
Okay. Let's move into the folks that signed up tonight, so thank you for sharing those thoughts. We will move beyond public comment to a superintendent update. Let our highlights, Rich?
Yeah, a couple of things that I want to highlight, as we move into August, our schools are doing the bristle of activity, so it's been wonderful to see students back. Marching band camp ended last week, so a lot of students have known high school, they are in marching band camp. And we also have members of student, middle high school, student council that met last week and are going to be meeting again this week to start planning for fall activities. The largest activity coming up at fall that student council supports is our homecoming, which will be here before we know it. So I had a chance to meet with our student council members last week, as well as our high school admin team, we're able to be with them and talk about the great events that are coming up. So over the next few weeks, so between now and our next board meeting, we'll have a new teacher workshop, starting on Monday of next week, that will take place on the 19th and the 20th, where all of our new teachers are beginning ready for the start of the school year, and then all of our teachers are back on Wednesday, the 21st, are welcome back and start their preparation for the start of the school.
Any other questions for Rich for the highlights?
Rich, we'll leave you at any council representative to share on the board.
Yes, one of the things that we're talking about when we meet on Wednesday is what that structure will look like, about the kind of plans in place on student council representation on the school.
Thank you.
Would you have a date for homecoming?
I'm sorry.
She asked what a date for homecoming, we know that.
Oh, that's such a good question.
Homecoming Friday is September 27th.
Excellent.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for that. And Free says data workshop report, and that's got my name attached to it, so I guess I will summarize that. And I think we've actually summarized those already, so I may be fairly brief here, but or actually, we haven't. We would not, this is for my apologies, my apologies. So we've gone kind of in a mode of semi-annually, I believe, we meet with the administration and the broader district management team, and review lots and lots of data. And that falls into some different areas, student performance and academics are certainly the main focus of that, but we also have SEL, social emotional learning data that we gathered through student surveys and whatnot. We also have our community feedback, staff and community member surveys, that we digest all the info we get from that. So we did that, I guess it's a couple of weeks ago now, and while I won't get into any specific data points with you, I can tell you that I'm very pragmatic, and they show us bar graphs, they have sort of a red, yellow, and green color scheme. Green are obviously areas that are doing well, and yellow are some cautionary areas, and certainly red are things that we want to minimize. And my pragmatic self always says to the admin folks, just make the red bars smaller across all the metrics that we're looking at. And I think I could summarize what we looked at a couple of weeks ago, is having checked that box. All of the red areas of students that are furthest behind their grade level performance in any particular academic subject area, or a negative response to a staff question, a survey question, a social emotional learning question, those red responses, if you will, that we want to minimize have all done so across the board. All the surveys, all the different data groups, et cetera. So I was very, very happy with that, I think most of the board would share that opinion that we have things moving in a very, very positive direction. Academically, kids are doing tremendous, tremendous work, improvements in all areas, and we're getting kids to the places where we want them to do. You know, I told you at the beginning, our mission is opportunity, achievement, and community for all. This is how we measure that, are we achieving what we're trying to do? And for the most part, I don't have to nod my head yes. It certainly does illuminate areas that we can work on, and keep working on, because I can assure you that the admin folks share with us plans of action, if you will, for any of the data points that aren't as good as they could be, or moving in the direction we want, and there are very, very few of those. But they have explained to us, you know, they've got a grasp of the issue, the situation, and share across all the buildings and all the different teaching disciplines. They've got a plan for how to get those numbers to improve, whether it's an actual academic achievement, or a response to a question that was, you know, more negative than we'd like, et cetera. So I'm rambling a bit, I'll stop there. If everyone was at the data workshop, so if you had different takeaways, please share that, but to me, that's kind of the high level summary of what we looked at.
I just wanted to add then, that was the administration that we heard from, and they were doing a great job, but it's every staff member we have from this group that contributes to our students' academic achievement, so just want to, thanks to all the staff, all the work.
Just want to share, Joe hit the nail on the head, I want to reinforce with a couple of really quick examples, because I know that that workshop wasn't live streamed, and that also, Joe shared the strong role academically, as measured by our I grade exams in both math and reading, and then also very strong BPU placement scores. Two things that I want to highlight on the SEL data, one is that a question is asked of all students in grades three through 12, if they have a strong sense of connection to our schools and feel a community within their learning environment, so we know that that's incredibly important for student success, and 90.5% of our students in grades three through 12 agreed with that statement. And then we survey our staff, our parents, and our families every year, and really strong support among all three of those groups. And I want to highlight from our family survey, one question that's asked is, my family's proud of the red dots, and the percent that agreed with that statement were 88%, and the percent that disagreed was 4%. So very strong feeling of pride, you can see red dots from families across our district, across all grade levels. And we asked a similar question about our community, so these are families that are not parents in our school district, but community members, and questions in my household, we are proud of the red dots, and for most folks who don't necessarily have a direct connection with the school, 77% agree with that and 10% disagree. So again, with our community as a whole, very strong sense of pride in the work that takes place in our schools, and the end, and helping to get from our students.
All right. Anybody else on the data workshop? Glad you want to move on. Okay, four on our agenda is a finance committee report, and the finance committee met over a week ago, I guess it is, and John chairs that for us, and he's going to share a little of what we worked on that meeting.
Thank you, Joe. Yes, finance committee had a meeting on Thursday, August 1st, we had one item on the agenda, it was referendum planning. In addition to the committee members, Joe, and Ed, and myself, the meeting was attended by Rick, Tracey, and Ed. Meeting was not only the longest committee meeting I've been part of, at just under three hours, it was probably one of the best I've been part of as well. This was a culmination of many efforts over the past year or so. We looked at and considered many different points, including the feedback from the community focus group, historical data, and future projections. Special thanks to Rich and Ross for their efforts answering all our questions and changing the spreadsheets on reply. First question we answered that night was, should we go to referendum in November? The answer was unanimous yes. After discussing a few different scenarios, we felt we left, we were left with two options to consider. These options are part of board docs, but to summarize, we are looking at either a $5 million three-year non-recurring, or a $5 million recurring. Finance committee decided to not include a recommendation for tonight, but rather include both options, let the full board decide. I know Ross will cover some slides in more detail, but if anyone else, anyone else has anything to add, please do so.
Go ahead and go through the information then, and then open it up for board discussion. Inboard docs are two documents, there's a memo that kind of lays out some of the details, and then there is the presentation slides, I'm going to start the presentation off, and then Ross is going to jump in soon. But on that second slide, acknowledgements and introduction, I want to thank the community focus group for the work that they did, both our speakers during public comment, both Dave and Dan were part of the community focus group. We had 35 of the boardy community members show up for each of those three sessions, so it was a great opportunity for us to both share information with members of our community, but more importantly, to get input from members of our community, and I want to thank everyone that took part and honored all of those sessions for their valuable time and input. A couple of the key takeaways from that, those sessions are listed on the bottom of that slide. State funding for public education has definitely not kept pace with inflation, it has created a situation where school districts across our area and across the state are needing to go to local taxpayers, not to look for additional revenue to be able to do new things, but to be able to have the revenue to continue the programs and opportunities for students that are in place right now. It really has, the state system really has created a system of have and have not school districts, there are districts that have local revenue available, are able to offer more opportunities for students, they're able to offer higher levels of salary and benefits for all of their employee groups, which makes it difficult for districts who don't have those resources to be able to continue to stay aligned with those other school districts, and to be able to maintain the things that they have in place. So those referendum discussions really are becoming the norm across school districts, and we know many school districts in our area will be bringing operating referendum questions to the voters this coming November. On the next slide, it talks about that balance that we always look to have in place between providing a high quality education and opportunities for students, with being some fiscal stewards for our taxpayers. I think that's something that our school district has done extremely well over the years. We offer a high quality education, we have all kinds of student achievement outcomes that demonstrate that academically. If you look at achievement, we consistently rank at or near the top of Rockhoney school districts in student achievement, whether it's the Wisconsin forward tests, the Wisconsin report cards, the ACT and AP that are measured at the high school, are things that we do extremely well. Opportunity is really important for us. We offer a wide range of high quality programs and opportunities, whether it's a high level of classes and academics, and for our high school students, the opportunity to take a lot of high level courses and be involved in a lot of fine arts and athletics. I think you do those things really well, and all of those are very important parts of a student's academic life. And the third portion of our strategic plan, our mission and vision is community, and we place a really high value on having those strong two-way partnerships. We're a statewide model for school business partnerships. Our, at Milton High School, our staff worked really well with local businesses to set up internships that not only value our students and get them on the job training, and the opportunity to get a taste of different potential careers while we're still in high school, but also offer a great value to our local business community. The class of 2024, our most recent graduates, also had over 5,000 hours of service work across our community. It's astounding to think about how those students are out providing service across all areas of our community to that level. So we work really hard to, even though we allocated resources that a lot of school districts send out, we work really hard to provide those opportunities for students and those opportunities for our families and community. I'm going to turn things over to Ross to kind of walk through some of the things that we've been talking about with the community focus group and with our finance committee, and then walk through the two scenarios that the finance committee asked us to bring for consideration for tonight. So Ross, take it from there.
Well, I want to start tonight by framing the major factors impacting our discussion meeting. This is a graph we've seen before, that compares the trajectory of the revenue increase index to inflation, which is the top line, and what we've seen from the last several state budgets of the year. At the end of the current state budget, districts across the state are working with a funding system that will have over $3,300 gap behind per people compared to rate of inflation. But this isn't the only story to tell. This is another graph we've seen before, but other than inflation, the funding levels per people show differentiation in our local comparable as well. This is a measure of our Badger Conference period of test scores, and what amount per people they have to do, had to use during the 2324 school year. Milton, with our current non-recurring referendum in place, is six from the bottom, well below the group average. The differences between districts are not new, but they highlight a funding system of haves and have nots that depend on local consideration of referendums and increasing frequency. Over the past several months, we have previewed with our board, committees, and community members about the state of our, the state of school finance and the future needs of the school district. This is a five-year view of an operating budget and major factors. Our costs increase at about 3% to 4% each year. In the last several years, our revenues have increased around 1% in state. This amounts to about a $1.2 to $1.3 million structural deficit each year without changes. In 2627, our current non-recurring referendum lapses, leaving close to a $4 million projected deficit. At our last finance committee, members came to consensus to consider two referendum options for tonight. Both options are going to affect the year after our appointment expires, and aims to smooth out the impact of future deficits in a way that gives us time to adapt to changing The first of those options is a three-year non-recurring referendum for $5 million dollars, 2627 school year, through 2829 school year. The non-recurring structure can be effective to stabilize revenue over a finite period, but beyond the final year, we have considerable deficits after the date expires. For example, the non-recurring referendum option outlined here indicates a $5 million authority through 2029. Once that expires, initial deficits as predicted here would approach approximately $7.6 million in 2930 school year. The second option is a recurring referendum for $5 million, beginning in 2627. This may be very similar to the non-recurring option just presented, but a recurring referendum keeps funding in its base revenue the year after it's authorized. This authority then recurs for future budgets as a permanent provision. Over this three-year period, however, the deficit and tax rate impact are nearly identical. If this model were to continue in 2930, deficit showing for that year would indicate a $2.6 million deficit instead of a $7.6 million one. In both of these scenarios, the estimated mill rate will remain relatively constant over the next several years. Over a 10-year period, including these projections, the tax rate is expected to remain below current year, the average of $7.52. In both of these scenarios, again, the mill rate impact is nearly ahead of over three year period. Should we quantify this for $100,000 of real home value? Here, that looks like $300,000 of home value in the same years. Also, note, please make sure to see that the mill rate projected is below the current rate in 2347. As we consider these options tonight, I also want to highlight that future state budgets, future state budgets will always play a factor in budget development. We currently have a $325 per people increase anticipated for future state budgets, but this still controls probably roughly about 1% per year. This is not a guaranteed increase, but current law suggests that it will remain in place at least for the next state budget cycle. Under our current assumptions, we anticipate the $325 per people continuing, but that still creates structural deficits that you're going to. As we consider future deficits again, we must acknowledge that the only way we have to balance future budgets are additional revenues or budgetary spending reductions. Given revenue challenges at the state level, many districts are turning to a referendum with increasing frequency. with increasing frequency. In the absence of revenue, production would have to come from one of these categories. Most of our budget is staffing. Other cost centers coming from services related to transportation, open enrollment, basic costs, maintenance, which are much harder to reduce. With that, I'll turn those back over to John and the rest of the board for discussion, and as necessary, I can add the potential language to the panel questions on some of these slides. Thank you, Ross.
Good. Okay. Thank you for the information, fellow board. So I fully support our commanding vote of our community request for a referendum to ensure that our district has replenished data to ensure that our educational programs are maintained, as well as ensuring that other opportunities are made optional for our students. The initial funds allow them to continue expense management that the district has been undertaking, but will make sure that we can continue to offer programs that our students and families desire, remain competitive with our salaries to retain our teachers, administrators, and support staff, and to make this district desirable to new students. The district is not immune to the cost pressures that are being felt across the U.S., and the current level of inflation has impacted the district as much as it has impacted our taxpayers. I do hope, as I am sure we all do, that the inflationary pressures that we have been feeling over the past three years can be in this aside, and we ensure they're manageable and viable. That said, a referendum is only good if it passes, so I will put a force forward for the non-recurring referendum as I feel our community wants to support our district, but I also feel they want to ensure their seat at the table. A lot happened in four years, and I feel we owe our taxpayers the ability to retain that seat when it comes to their tax dollars. As mentioned above, we're all feeling this pressure together, but I know they want to support our schools.
Ross, can you go back to the slide six?
I don't have the numbers, I'm trying to be quick.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, it was suggested during public comment to stick with 2.5 for another few years. Can you just speak to what the slide would look like if that were the case?
If that were the case, to continue at $2.5 million, the initial deficit for 2627 school year would be 1.3 million. So the numbers in the 2627 through 2829 school year would be offset by a $2.5 million difference.
So it'd be like, it'd be like 4.87.
Our product gets 4.8, 6.3, 7.6.
Thank you.
Ross, when does the current state budget end?
The 2525 budget goes through the end of the 2425 school year. We'll start hearing about budgetary requests at the state level this fall, and then state leaders enter and discuss that this way.
That's 2526 and 2627. So before this slide ends, there's two more state budgets that I was recommending.
Okay, on the bottom here, the year or shape based on funding.
That's a better word, okay, appreciate that.
Ross, could you clarify, in either scenario, both scenarios, if the low revenue ceiling was raised, what would the impact be to option A or option B?
They would have different impacts, that's a good question to recover. The low revenue ceiling dictates what is the lowest multiplier of the revenue limit formula for all districts across the state of Wisconsin. With our current non-recurring referendum in place, Milton is actually at the lowest multiplier, as is the rest of the, of third of state school districts across the state of Wisconsin right now, which is $11,000. If a non-recurring budget is, if a non-recurring referendum is passed subsequent to what we have now, we would remain in our base state that the level of revenue ceiling is at that time. If the state were to make a substantial increase in low revenue ceiling, would be a non-recurring referendum in place, our base multiplier would immediately jump to that low revenue ceiling amount. Under a recurring referendum, that would not happen because we directly augmenting our base calculation. So if we, for example, multiply this year, which is more impossible, from $11,000 to $12,000, and next year the state would multiply to $12,000 of low revenue ceiling, we would see what happens.
What happens in 2930, based on that low revenue ceiling and what the state will reverse us to the total? So for example, in the non-recurring, we get to 2930, we'll have this much of a deficit as compared to if we do that.
So as Rick mentioned earlier, we mentioned that the type of subject with a non-recurring question moving forward could place us in a 7.6 million deficit in 2930 versus a 2.6 deficit in the non-recurring option. Your question was about augmentation of the low revenue ceiling. By the time we get to that point, we don't know if the state will make a change of the low revenue ceiling, but I hazard a guess that if they did augment the low revenue ceiling, we'd be roughly the same position by the time we got there, because we'd still have a 325 per people in the next four years, adding to our multiplier for those four years, whereas we might be putting that along into our base 2627 of this recurring question. Is that answer your question?
I don't think so.
Okay, can you reiterate?
So 2930, you certainly have about a 7.6 million.
Yes.
But then I got it, just heard you say that 2930, the non-recurring, we're in almost the same position.
No, not on a deficit basis. I mean, a 2.6 million deficit.
It's just that the voice.
Yeah, were all those assumptions to remain intact or the same? Those are the differences.
Ross, your history doing this, how many times have four-year assumptions ever changed?
Almost.
Almost. Just want to be careful that we're trying to project out, and in my years, 20-something years, considering finance as well, I've never had to function for so. We need to go past this, we need, you know, there's a lot.
Right, and this is boiling down a lot of data into a four-year assumption that fits up one slot in the rest of the deficit projections. The 325 per people, if you'd asked me 10 years ago, I'd never have considered it possible. Now that we have it in place in the current statute, that this is what we're going to get for the next 400 years, presumably, that's at least a fair base to build our revenue projections on, knowing that our cost structure has been moving in the same trajectory it's been, if we call the rest of our budget constantly staff, like insurance, transportation.
Let me interject one piece here, and I thank everybody for your comments, and you'll certainly have time for plenty more. I want to first of all thank Rich and Ross and Ross's staff that helps him. I would wholeheartedly echo what John said, that finance committee meeting was lengthy, but incredibly helpful, incredibly informative, lots of detail, and it was really fun because Ross was working with a live model, if you will, and he said, hey, what about this number? And you can plug that into a spreadsheet and head it up on the screen, and you can see some, some instant cause and effect type of thing, so thank you for that. Thank you to the entire board. Jennifer joined us, but we got her up to speed right after the fact, so thank you for everybody sharing all that time to digest this. It's a very important thing that we're undertaking, so everybody has really rolled up their sleeves and gone into this project wholeheartedly, so thank you for that. Just to clarify, for the folks following along with us, if you can see our agenda, we have B, C, D, and E as potential action items, and just to unmuddy the water a little bit, if you will, B and C reference the same opportunity or question, if you will. We have a very deliberate and procedural path here. If in fact we chose that option or made a motion to that effect, we have to authorize our budget to exceed by X number of dollars for X number of years, and then a subsequent resolution that would authorize a referendum election to support that. Hence, D and E are also length of the pivot, if you will. They are, they're talking about the same referendum scenario, so just so folks don't think that there are four different choices, there are not. Or there, someone could move to do something that's not on here too, I don't want to make that assumption, but what we're bringing forward for discussion are the two choices Ross alluded to, scenario one, scenario two, and the four action items are kind of the two and two that would follow that, so just hopefully that clarifies things for folks so they know where we're at. And we do not have a motion on the floor yet, we don't need one. I would welcome folks to share your thoughts. Like I said, we're all at the committee meeting, we had the chance to weigh through the different pieces of this, so I just wanted to set the table a little bit and allow folks to continue their discussion.
Ross, one of the things we changed at the committee level was the, do you want to go back to the projections, Charlie? Yeah, it was the September membership FTE, just from memory, because once we brought up, well, declining enrollment, what's the impact there? And from memory, wasn't that big of an impact to say 11th, 12th, 13th level?
If we, so what you're seeing up here in both projections is a roughly 1% reduction in the three-year roll factor from using calculus every year. Because many districts are still, we're getting through the final years affecting the pandemic in 2020, there were some significant dips in most of, across the state. Those three-year averages are now finally looking a way out of the system, those three-year averages, but we still have projected roughly a 1% decrease in these estimates to show where revenues are starting to return in the next several years. To your point, John, if we were to change the enrollment projection to be flat, and that three-year average would just start to recover, it would not make a significant difference. In this case, I believe the biggest impact is just $110,000 per year, but we'll be looking at that later.
I think that is a really important question, and it reinforces, and Ross has referred this a little bit, that as we go out to many years in the future, even going out in the four years, it would seem very far, but it's all based on the assumptions that we make. We don't know that the number that we have plugged in for our September membership is exactly where it will be, but we make moderate assumptions based on what our history has been and what we consider to be a most likely outcome, both for our membership and for the state's per people increases. We, the board has talked about it a lot, but it was conceived that we had $325 built in each year. That's the current law. The legislature and the governor could at any time change that, but we feel that that's a reasonable investment moving forward. It is, and Ross had mentioned that he wouldn't have thought that that was even possible. If we look back at even very recent history, that's a larger increase than, than school districts had gotten from the legislature, so it's very possible that that number could decrease, which would make our projected deficits even larger, but we are going with that assumption because that's the one we're at now.
I think it's pretty clear that something needs to be done. Big funding is not keeping up with our needs. We need to be able to continue to track, retain our staff. But earlier about our data, how hard our staff is working, all of those opportunities that we have in our families and our students, I want to make sure that we're able to continue to offer those. My opinion is that a recurring referendum is the best long-term financial solution. I like that the proposal for the new referendum starts after the current one expires. I know that there are people who were turned off by the previous overlap, and they might have been supporters after not doing that. I'm confident that we have time and resources to educate our community on why this is the best route, hopefully with the help of some of those people ended those community focus groups, get the word out, educate people, tell them why this is the best way to go. Mr. President, I'm going to make a motion. Through the resolution authorizing a school district budget to exceed the revenue limit by $5 million for recurring purposes, be resolved by the school board and the school district of Milton Rock, Tennessee, Kentucky, Wisconsin, that the revenues included in the school district budget be authorized to exceed revenue limit specified in section 121.91, Wisconsin statutes, by $5 million being given one week. In 2627, the school year for recurring purposes, it's a seat of ongoing educational program with staff.
Okay, we have a motion in second on the floor, and I won't reread it because we have it on the screen, but it's a little deeper. But we certainly want to continue our discussion. We've got folks that have not had a chance to weigh in yet, and not have to, but we certainly want you to have the opportunity, so we do have a motion in second on the floor, but we can continue our discussion along the lines that we have. I guess I would go next, I don't have to be last when you need some, so pardon me if I'm jumping onto their tangent. Here again, I really thank the board for their hard work, and I want to, I want to make a second point about how we landed where we are, and you know, the great data that Ross and Rich provided for us, kind of, you know, I think John opened his comments with the fact that, you know, our first question was, do we go to a referendum? Well, we kind of answered that question, no, don't know, we can see probably what happens if we don't. That's not an option that anybody wanted to pursue, so we kind of all nodded our heads, yes, need to go to a referendum. So then it dials into how much, how long, and whether it's recurring or non-recurring. And that's really the three-legged stool that we all wrestle with. Those are the, this is the culmination of kind of attacking all three legs there as we walk through it. The first one that we came to a pretty unanimous agreement on is the three-year piece. You know, we've lived through two five-year non-recurring referenda, and that that Ross shared with us is always a balance of the near term is relatively more certain, things further out are way less so. So a referendum for one-year solution, we didn't know if that made a lot of sense. Five years gave us some discomfort for some of the predictability pieces, and we landed in the middle, and I think most folks thought three years was, was the right window to look ahead here, so. And I'm fully supportive of that, three years to me is the right look ahead here. The $5 million piece I want to talk about a little bit, Ross showed me the numbers there, and $5 million was a number that we sort of arrived at with talking out, talking about things on both sides of that. The two and a half that we're currently living with, it was suggested earlier tonight that we could continue that. I think our forecast model shows that that would generate big enough deficits that we weren't comfortable doing that, because deficits mean cuts. You don't just run a deficit and think that your checkbook recovers the next year, it does not. So if we live a deficit, something does not get paid or spent or compensated. So I want to make the point here that we have a wonderful school district that performs highly across all the metrics that we look at. We want to maintain that. We're not asking the community to expand or to enhance much of our programming. We feel like we're doing a really good job with the resources we've got available, and we want to keep doing that. So we consider, you know, higher dollar value because part of me, and I brought this up at the committee level, said, well, why would we forecast a solution that still shows a deficit out three years if our assumptions were correct? Well, here again, this is a bit of a balance. To ask for a big enough number to clear those deficits, we felt was kind of a nonstarter, and we asked the community for more than we thought they could support. So we backed up from the higher numbers, and here again, you sort of work in from both ends, and the $5 million seemed like a nice compromise to address our needs, and yes, it does forecast a $1.3 million deficit three years out, but Ross gave us some comfort that with enough time to work towards that, that is somewhat manageable, and that gives us, gives us a chance to be very frugal, be very pragmatic, and still continue the programming and opportunities for the kids that we're enjoying now. So that's where we landed with the $5 million. And then really, the discussion for me flips around to recurring or non-recurring, and all of our comments tonight are sort of hinting at that piece of it. It bears mentioning that those two options impact us basically the same. Ross showed you the forecast, that the surplus and/or deficit or balance piece is relatively the same, and the impact on the mill rate is relatively the same. What it does do, and I'm speaking about the recurring piece, is not create that the year that you can't see off the edge of the chart, for lack of a better way to describe it, would automatically have, if in fact we had a five-year non-recurring, so we saw the 555 forecast, if that's what we live, well, after that third year of five, there's an automatic five-year hole, $5 million hole, plus whatever deficit we could be carrying. That's what Ross is referencing here, and it's 6.3 to 7.6 depending if you're lumping two deficits together or one, but it, it gives the school board in 2029. the school board in 2029 a really big challenge in my estimation. And I think that point got made at committee level and I think some other board members recognized that the more responsible, what I suggested was more responsible approach is the recurring ballot language that builds that $5 million into our base revenue and it does not go away at year four, year five, or anything ongoing. We will still presumably have a deficit to deal with. I think it is much more manageable. I think the board sitting at this table in that timeframe would have options and certainly some other things will have changed, those numbers will change, but to me, I look at our job as to present the best solution that we possibly can. We've been elected by the community to do the work, to do the homework, the diligence, the due effort, if you will, to explore this problem, to understand it. We get great guidance and help to do that. And at the end of the day, personally at least, I want to get behind a solution that makes the most sense for me. And that would be the recurring $5 million referendum. I will pause.
Sure, I'll go next. I too am supportive of the recurring referendum for a lot of the same that Jeffrey and Joe had mentioned. I am a firm believer of finding balance and this group had a discussed and hashed over the numbers, timeframe, the impact to taxpayers, the impact to the district. And truly finding balance still means that the district will have to reduce its spending. So again, I want everyone in the board and everybody in the community to remember that this isn't allowed the ability to have more, to increase programs and to have those extras that we all would love to have. District is still going to have to, again, tighten its own purse strings because, again, as you saw, the numbers are real. We're not making these numbers up here just in fact. And I feel like personally, a steady increase in my own, again, finances is way better for me in planning purposes. I think we owe it to the taxpayers to allow them to understand how long they're in this and also then so they can plan. What it really allows is for the district to, and that disperses the district. So again, they know throughout those years exactly what it is that's going to be coming. So that they have to reduce, again, programs or services, they know the future is, at least it's consistent with the state's finances. So I take a hard stance in everything in moderation and this is not an extensive ask. Again, I think if you read the local papers or go out to other county districts, you're going to see that there are other districts in their community who are going to be asking for a great deal of funding from their taxpayers and certainly in advantage conferences. I'm also supportive of the community.
Can you go back to the slide that's referring to the annual tax impact? Sorry. To refer in the annual tax impact, slide, it's slide 10. There, that.
Yes.
So I'm in favor of the recurring referendum also and as I look at this and the impact on $100,000 house, as compared to this year, the 28, 29, you'd be paying $110 less per $100,000 on house. And we will have not put ourselves in a financial cliff the year after. And I hear this, you know, we're guessing, right? Whenever you're doing anything in finance, you're guessing over the long term. And if you look out over the long term and you see the difference between $2 million and $7 million, even if there's some adjustment in that, there's still millions of dollars in difference in there, even if we are off by a million, right? It's, it's going to be a cliff. And so I feel you'd be paying less $100,000 and we wouldn't be putting ourselves into this financial difficulty when we're having to look to cut. I asked Jimmy what 7.5, 7.5 is how you watch, and I think you said that's 13 or 14% of our budget. Yeah, that's a huge ask four years from now. When we have to take on, we have the opportunity to not have that happen.
How much of an increase in the property value can be built into those numbers?
So like I said, because this speaks more into the amount for 100 best options. It's not even issue two. What's happening to the property rates, how our earlier slides, I did, but it was like a whole. So I'll use the statistics as a example. Across the top of this slide, you'll see that we've built in future increases, the publicized value, and we are anticipating a cooling, for lack of a better term, of the most recent high inflation marks, where we do expect it to decline slowly over the period of recovery. So kind of the sideways decision. In 24, 25, we don't have final numbers yet, but we're talking about that for the next couple of months. We anticipate that to commit close to 90% in negative and each year after, we're very expecting them to go down 90% for a year, but increasing 8765. Great to use the real name.
Thank you. So just a few points and I've said I made my sense before, what I would recommend, but just to the board members, I did give a few more details. One thing to highlight is that in our district, it is public record, 26% of our students fall into the economic disadvantage. If you extrapolate that into our community, you're talking 30%. Our last referendum lost 60-40. The one prior to that, the two and a half, I think I went to, oh, I don't think it was 71 of those. I just want to make a point, I don't disagree with you on, yes, I want to set up future boards for success, but in the current economic world that we're living in, a referendum is only good.
I guess 11 days ago when we were at the committee, I was in support of the recurring referendum. I think it's a longer fix or closer to a fixer solution. The last 11 days, I've talked to a lot of people, other stakeholders, kind of going back and forth recurring or non-recurring. Just today I had a conversation with somebody and I took a note and I thought it was pretty good to share. These are her words. It says, "So for me, the question isn't really about recurring versus non-recurring because the referendum has passed. The question for me is which is more likely to resonate with voters in November? I think the non-recurring option resonates more." So that kind of gets me back to what Tracy said, this thing has to pass, right? So I'm in favor of non-recurring, but tomorrow morning, no matter what happens, I'll be supporting the board, whatever the board decides. We do need this thing to pass. And one of the things, in three years or four years, we have these community focus groups and I hope we can continue those throughout the year, all the times. I think a lot of these people, they want to get together, they want updates, want to know where our states can do what our budget looks like. So hopefully in that process, we can continue those, continue to educate those that are in this place.
I'll try to do that and say it again. Bruce, I want to thank the board and everybody that came to all the committee meetings. This is hard work and it's tough discussion. Sometimes I'm going both ways, which like, it's a very tough decision and I want to articulate the board, I think it's taken very seriously. Of all the boards that ever sat out, it was a very professional discussion with respect to both sides. So I really appreciate that. Ross, you've given us the graphs that the children's, the funding over the years.
Yes.
Way back there. I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity and cheerlead that this is the real problem. State is under funding all schools, not just the school district alone. I would cheerlead for everyone to say that to their legislative leaders every chance you get. This is a 14-year deficit, it's not going away, it hasn't happened, it is our real problem. Putting us in this really tough position right here, having to make this decision right here, right now. And every chance you get, anybody, I would gladly talk to you about it, cheerleading that this is what really needs to be fixed in the long run, out of the situation. With that said, I'm leaning towards the recurring, simple fact that it's a tough choice and I think if I was to ask, be asked my personal guidance, what I do for my family, that's what I would do. When I stood there at graduation, year after year, watching students go across, I think I get a handout, I do everything I possibly can. It's over now, right? They're gone, they're off on their own, doing what they want. I feel like that's the right decision because as a last official, it's my responsibility, I really can't possibly, no disrespect to the other people, it's also very.
That was, Bruce, you spoke with state why the non-recurring was pressing.
She didn't know and that was a pretty common response. Everybody seemed to be in favor of a referendum, especially about that, but the non-recurring versus being recurring was, that's where we got a little bit speaking up.
I expect to many people too, the hardest critic, if she's not watching, was my daughter. It took a long time, that conversation with her and to have understood the difference between the two. And once she understood the difference, and she is not the only person that's successful to many people, and it took a while to explain it. And that's the challenge that we have, is getting people to understand why it is that we would choose that, which is everyone I spoke to once we got there, wanted a recurring. And that's, that's going to be really hard. And you can't do it in five minutes, it's not possible. And so everyone I spoke to, again, is very driven on recurring because that word, there is a connotation in history that we shouldn't be applying to this, but we have to. And so I agree with what is easier versus what is harder, but I just don't think the harder decision is the right decision. For me, for me, I'm almost thinking for myself.
A couple of things that I'd like to highlight and ties to what I heard from all the board members tonight. One is around the consideration that we had over the past few months. If you think back to when we started our community focus groups, we had pretty strong agreement from the community focus group and from board members that were part of that, that we need to do something to address the upcoming deficits. And that the state has put us in this position, the slide that's still on board, which demonstrates that extremely well. And I think that another thing we talked a lot about with the community focus groups is the strong efforts that we've made over the years to be this way responsible, to make reductions where and when we can and not the school district that has a lot of pluff all the way around. If we need to get at these reductions by making cuts in our spending, it is going to have to be get at the expense of things that have a direct impact on our students because we're extremely lean in as many areas as we're able to be. Throughout the community focus groups and the word conversations, the community conversations, we looked at various dollar amounts. Once there was a clear consensus that we needed to bring some referendum question to voters, we talked about different potential dollar amounts. While we have this slide up, I asked Ross that $3,300 per pupil that our district and other districts across the state are behind inflationary costs of the last 15 years or so. I asked Ross, well, how much in additional revenue per year would that be? And Ross, the answer is approximately, so if we were to quantify that in today's dollars, we'd be looking at over 100,000. So to get to the point where those two lines would match would be about an $11 million ask and we know that it's not reasonable to go to our taxpayers and say, we're asking for $11 million. So we talked about amounts that are potentially building up to a certain amount to match those growing deficits. We talked about a $6 million referendum that would address the needs over those next three years more clearly, but the board and the finance committee did a really nice job of kind of landing on that $5 million amount as an amount that would both meet the school district's needs to be able to maintain our programs for students, but also if you look to the line graph slide, the mill rates, you can see the low rate impact. And I think it's important to break that out into the blue parma line, which is our most recent history. You can see the, in 2019, 20 was after we just passed a capital referendum and our mill rate went up, but it didn't go up considerably from where it was prior to that, but how steady that decline has been for our taxpayers over that period between then and between now. So our projection for this current year is $6,070. And you can see that next year that that will drop and the first year that a $5 million referendum will go into place, whether it's recurring or non-recurring, that mill rate for 26, 27 would be $6.85, which is a 15 cent increase over where it is currently. So that $5 million ask, once the $2.5 million expires, isn't going to lead to astronomical mill rates and increase in our mill rates. And then following that over the next few years, that mill rate would decrease to even a lower amount than it is right now and a lower amount than it's been in our district for an extremely long time. So what we always go for, and I think Jennifer mentioned it, is that we're balanced. We want to be able to provide a high quality education for our students and that really well. We want to be able to provide opportunities for our students, academic opportunities, fine arts and extracurricular opportunities for our students, and we do those things really well. And it's important for us to do those things while being this way responsible. What we're asking here and what the board is considering here would allow us to continue to do both of those things really well, in my opinion.
Ross, can you go back to the slide? I don't know if it's a challenge. This is the one slide I think that scares me the most. And at least I think that why a recurring referendum is the best long-term solution to look at these potential bunch of reductions, age freezes, staffing cuts, reducing extra hours, I think that's, that really scares me and I think on recurrent, we need to go to minimize these eventual things.
Great. I totally agree with that. I just want to go to record and say, 100% agree with that. I'm 100% for the recurring, but this thing also has to pass, so that's my only reserve. But I agree with you totally.
I'm confident that we have some help from those people that came to those community focus groups a couple of years time. They can help us educate, work out, help you hold. If that's helpful.
I think that'll be key is to educate the community. It's complex stuff, so.
I'd like to go on the record as well. Again, I understand what you've done, I respect this, and I have a skin in the game. My child will be until we are a part of this district if this falls off. So again, this concerns me, but I leave and look at the results from the past couple of referendums. I look at how many folks are in the district versus how many are elderly people in our community who don't necessarily see the value of the school district, although they may, they may not know what it is. We can't hit all of them. And that's the best problem and concern that I have, which is why, I mean, when someone sees, I think when they see a question that says this amount of money for this many years, they might take a breath versus, and the papers already put it out there, it was written in perpetuity in the newspaper in the article that hit last week. There were some, I've read the comments on the article, I've read a couple of different things. I want this to pass to protect our schools and that's my only hesitation about making it recurring. And that's my only hesitation about making it recurring.
Just to be clear, everyone has skin in the game.
Well, you're saying reduction in workforce and closing buildings and limiting curricular... Like, these are things that, and understanding everybody has skin in the game. But if I have to go and tell, you know, my children, my child, like, sorry you can't play anymore. But like, that's when I say that I'm not taking it away from anyone else sitting up here. But that's why I'm so concerned to keep what amazing opportunities they have, we have now. And I just look at these numbers from the last vote and it just makes me very nervous.
All right, does anyone else have additional comments? Obviously, if you have a question in a second on the floor. Yeah, certainly we'll call it, but we just want to make sure that we don't limit someone's chance to weigh in. This is some of the most important stuff that you do, of course. So just to be clear, Rick's motion is along the lines of action item D. You've got your agenda in front of you. This potential motion would be to authorize a resolution for our budget to exceed revenue limits by $5 million for recurring purposes. And I was starting here to discuss, so I'm focused here on what we're voting on. Does anyone have any question on that piece of it?
Not a question, one last statement. Although I'll be voting no, I completely support the board and the board, you know, tomorrow, I'm supporting this, whatever we decide to make, so...
Okay, I will call the question. And we've asked for a roll of all votes, and we'll certainly do that. So the motion on the floor is to authorize the school district budget to exceed the revenue limit by $5 million for recurring purposes. Yes, vote or yay? And this is affirmation of that. If you're not in support, please hold no or hang. I'll start at my left, Ed.
Yes.
And Jennifer?
Yes.
Joe is yes. Rick, yes. Tracy?
No.
John?
No.
And Annette? By the two, I call the motion passed. We do, that's a subsequent courtway piece. All right, I'll make a call.
By the order, sorry.
I'm sorry?
I would like to make a motion for a roll call vote to approve the resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed the revenue limit by $5 million per year for three years for non-recurring purposes to be resolved by the school board of the school district of Milton Rock, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, that the revenues included within the school budget be authorized to exceed the revenue limit specified in section 21.91 Wisconsin statutes by $5 million per year, three years, beginning with '26, '27 school year and ending with '28, '29 school year for non-recurring purposes in the state of Ottawa and Community Program Statute.
Okay. That motion leaves a second. And if no one's voting second, the motion will fail. I would be glad that motion died.
Okay, Mr. President, I want to make a motion to approve a resolution providing for the referendum election. On the question of the approval of a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $5 million for recurring purposes, as described in the document, I go option two referendum resolution, which is attached to that item four.
Thank you. Rick's motion, a second by Jennifer, as you just served him there. This, as I indicated earlier, is a parallel action, if you will, to authorize an election, referendum election, to support what we made as a resolution as the board, so just so folks are clear what the second motion does here. Discussion on this motion. And we'll call a vote this one the same way, and I will hop to the other end of the table, I guess, or Annette. John?
Yes.
Tracy?
No.
Rick?
Yes.
Joe is yes. Jennifer?
Yes.
And six to one, I give that motion passed. All right, thank you, folks. As I indicated earlier, the board has done a lot of value lifting on this in addition to Rich, Ross, and folks that's supporting us. Thank you for all of your efforts. It is no small task. Okay, we are moving on to five, is the Transportation and Safety Committee report from Tracy.
So the Transportation and Safety Committee met on Friday, August 2nd, where the administration presented a committee with an update on the district's safety and re-unification plan. The district has opted to implement recommendations and protocols from the I Love You Guys Foundation, whose plan is action-based and allows organizations for sponsored students and parents to share a specific vocabulary for quick and coordinated action. And I'd like to say thank you to Eric and the entire team. Safety is so important, and the work that that team does to keep our students safe is amazing. So I'm going to turn it over and let you go ahead. So the school district has an integrated safety school team. It's comprised of administrators and members from law enforcement, fire, background health departments, people who have, oh, I'm sorry, I probably overcame the question. Part of our goal is always to stay on top of what are related recommendations from the experts on safety school or critical incident response. After much discussion, the team decided that for this coming school year, we are going to shift our critical incident response terms to use the standard response protocol from the I Love You Guys Foundation. Now, our critical incident response, those are emergencies that might require some sort of immediate action on the part of staff and students to respond. In summary, what you see here is the standard response protocol. It is five different actions that can be called out on the PA with specific responses to provide for either safe exit or safe sheltering, or in general standardized responses if an emergency were to take place. You can see here we have hold, secure, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter. In high summary, hold, if we're to ask students to stay in the classroom and not the hallways. And that might be something like in medical emergency, taking place in the schools, we need to keep the hallways clear. So in case of response. In a hold, it's an announcement to go over to the PA, hold in your classroom, and with the standard response protocol, staff and students know exactly what to do. Secure and lockdown are similar to what we might remember as soft lockdown or hard lockdown. But the advantage to changing over the SRP is now we have a standardized language that's not just used across buildings, but also used across districts and familiar with law enforcement. So security's called, or lockdown's called. Again, law enforcement, emergency responders, staff, students are all on the same page on what the expectations are for that emergency response. Are there any questions about any of the protocols that you see here?
I just a comment here. This looks like an incredibly student-friendly poster. Is this like posted in all classrooms or places that students would see this so they become familiar with, with Rich?
As an inspiration on the SRP is that they include it not only in training videos, but also in the classrooms with our sub-holders, staff trainings, that gets very easy to respond and share vocabulary.
I just want to bring up that the training... Really articulating this so well. This is very important work that has evolved over the last decade or so. I really love this program, it was a plus to understand it. You really understand the real world, I think you understand it. It's something that's really important to do, so I want to thank you for paying time for that. I feel really confident in doing that right now.
Apparently we could go to the next one, but that started right there. For the video. The next item that we talked about was something called reunification. So this would be if there was a critical incident that required evacuation from the school. It's the process by how we get families back to home. Now, in schools, we're already experts at reunification. I mean, think of how we clear out our school logings every day. We make sure a ride ticket's on the right bus, getting home with the right person. But if there were to be an emergency, it's the standard reunification method, also from the I Love You Guys Foundation, offers a set of directions and protocols that will allow us to handle crises, to not have to build the playwalk line in. What I have here is actually from the Texas Safety Commission, and it's probably one of the best overviews of reunification I've ever seen, simplified down to about a minute and a half. I'm actually going to let them explain what it is. We can maybe increase the volume and guaranteeing a better reunification. Just a talk. I just have a moment. Reunification is a company process and maintain the chain of custody for the student. Reunification sites should include an area to unload students, examine view of media and parents. Additional areas placed to conduct interviews, so private crisis counseling may be needed. Churches, civic centers, and other schools can also serve this as a reunification site. The basic process for reunification is to have parents arrive, identify themselves with the students they're picking up. Next, a reunifier retrieves the students, takes them to the reunification area to meet the parents. Students and teachers should arrive at the student pool area away from the side of the parent's media when they will check in. Teachers and students should always remain together and be ready for reunifiers to retrieve them. Once students, staff, and parents begin arriving at the sign, a greeter meets parents on a line. The greeter hands out reunification card forms and then directs the parents to leave the line. Parents and guardians must have a good ID, ready to join this process. Once the reunification card is completed, the parents give the card and their ID to a checker who verifies the parents' information. The checker then tears off the bottom of the reunification card and returns it to a parent. The top half of the card is given to an account who verifies the information against the roster. Parents take the bottom of the card and pursue to the reunification parent. At the reunification area, parents hand the bottom of the card to a reunifier who retrieves the student. The reunifier asks the student if they wish to go with the parent, and then takes the student to the parent. If the student is not there, the reunifier will give the card to a crisis counselor who will put the parent to a party. This was a basic overview of the standard reunification method. If you would like to know more about this process, please refer to the standard reunification method to the Texas School Safety Centers website. So that's a brief overview. The simplest terms about the process is both the SRP and the SRM are being incorporated into our district-wide crisis communications and management plan, which is distributed to our admin team. We are also planning upcoming trainings for staff and corporate discussions on building leadership on how the SRM works in all school districts. Again, we'd just like to thank you and all the work that you and the team have done, even coming out of the data workshops, safety. When our kids know that they're safe, they learn better. And to have a plan like this, to know that they know from both a parent and a student perspective, it really makes for a better reputation. So thank you, Gary. I definitely want to push credit back on to who really chanced a school team and integrated them.
Gary and her team really do an outstanding job in finding and especially coordinating with our local law enforcement agencies, our fire department. It's a great partnership that we have with those groups. And I just want to let the board know that we do have an executive session, agenda item, where we're going to be looking at more specifics about our reunification plan. We obviously don't want to share that information publicly about a lot of those specifics. We want to maintain that safety for our students and staff, but we'll be going into executive session tonight to share some information on that with the board.
One other I think point that you made, Annette, that you built your, obviously, the staff and we trained, the students as well will be drilled. And that's one point that I know that you made that I really appreciate it was that we don't put them surprisingly angry or try to put them with anxiety. It doesn't work as well, I guess. The fact, the tragedy of school shootings is that there are not enough of them and enough protocols in place that we now have good data to support the best practices. And as it was shared in that one training, people do not do better in a fire drill because they're told there's a fire. I think we've all seen the Awkward Episode, right? So in the end, it's about making sure they understand the protocols and not doing it in a, you should say, mindset. They lose in that training. Appreciate that work, of course.
All right. Thanks, Gary. All right, so we will roll on. We have a couple items in due business through the book slide. So as Julia is making her way through the podium, a letter A is discussion and cross collection on our Children at Risk Support Plan for 24th or 25th. This is a usual and normal piece of business for us, so go ahead, Julia.
Yes, this is an annual report that is given. So I can give a little brief overview, but my memo was attached and referenced there for you. But first aid statutes. A report is given to the board that details how the school district intends to support students who are identified as being at risk or in that category. So our obligation is number one, to identify those students for the indicators that are listed, and to number two, have a plan in place to address the needs so that we can have a very good rate. The memo also outlines some proactive strategies and universal support and targeted supports that we have in place for our students. And for Milton, I'm just going to highlight some of those at a high level. That means implementing early warning sites so that those indicators are, we have awareness of them and that we're constantly reviewing them. We do have a new process through NextPat to have all of the indicators kind of alerted so that our teams are reviewing this data and do so on a proactive level and then put plans in place right away. There are other indicators or warning levels that are not listed that we do kind of take into consideration. So compiling those, like attendance or critical truth, maybe super high levels below, maybe some behavioral or opposite to that, or we can kind of overlay those data points. And that gives us a really pretty accurate picture as to what students could potentially be at risk and how we can support them. We did launch our social emotional screen there last year. So that is also a way to kind of gauge connectedness because that is another layer of potentially having students be disconnected from the school and therefore being at risk of not attending or not graduating. We're also always looking at our alternative learning programs and kind of access to a variety of modifications for curricular purposes. So this plan would be a motion for consideration unless there are questions for me. But again, it's a point that we have in place and we're doing a pretty good job of that. The Children at Risk Support Plan has presented. Oh, second.
Thank you. Jennifer's launching a second one, Tracy, to improve our Children at Risk Support Plan. As we've heard, questions for anyone?
I don't have a question to ask a person who is not at this before them. I read through this and it was so easy to understand, it was very clear. And I could tell exactly what you were doing to help kids, so thank you for that.
Thank you. We'll be back.
Just curious, how many at-risk children?
Don't graduate.
Yeah, like, maybe a few, the last couple of years.
Well, the data has gone down, has decreased. But the indicators, because it starts at grade five, by the time they get to grade 12, we have less than a handful of students who actually do not graduate. There probably are plans in place for how they're going to achieve some sort of a GED or something like that. But the numbers could be alarming just based on the criteria that's set forth for the state statute. But we have so many plans in place and processes through our tiered systems of support where that number really decreases by the time they actually put attention or anything. Yeah.
Something that really reinforces that, we use the Badger Conference as comparables in a lot of different ways. When we look at multiple years of Canada, there are 15 school districts from the Badger Conference, and you have been consistently in the top three or four for graduation rate in the Badger Conference schools. So it reinforces how well we're doing in comparison to districts that now sit with more resources than we do. So it's a testament to the work that our teachers, our support staff, our principals do to make sure that students that are struggling get a support if any needs are big and graduate.
It comes back to that data workshop that we had and seeing those numbers progress, especially in the, as the schools, as it went up in the school, highlighting that we do have that limited handful that don't graduate. But I know you work with them as well at the state level, so reach out to the team.
Okay, motion on the floor is to approve... Okay, motion on the floor is to approve the Children at Risk Support Plan as presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you, Julian. Yeah, move to B for new business. Which would necessitate Mr. Schatz making his way to the podium. Discussion and possible approval of the high school baseball field lighting project with musco lighting and deeper power. Even?
All right, I'm here, uh, for the board tonight to, uh, figure on the progress of the substantial evolution at, uh, Camp Union Family. I gave the district to make some, uh, really nice significant improvements to the baseball diamond behind high school. And, uh, most recently, we have received our competitive bids for, uh, field lighting portion of the project, and, uh, the field lighting, uh, numbers came back a little bit better than we were, uh, expecting. We actually got the more numbers in, we heard, uh, more than half yet. And, uh, at this point, uh, of the season right now, even the contractors are very confident we can have, uh, this lighting, uh, in place for the spring of twenty twenty-five, uh, baseball season. Uh, so the, the motion here today is to, uh, authorize a little bit around the project, which is musco lighting and, uh, deeper power. And, uh, yeah, that'll keep the project moving and, uh, will continue, uh, development of the replacement dugouts that will most likely be here in a month or so. Therefore, consideration.
Good question. You send out those bids, is it light, like lights for every bidder, or is it a light that they suggest? Just curious.
Yeah, so there's not a lot of, uh, you know, lighting options. Lighting options out there, and in this general region, uh, musco lighting is the lighting, uh, supplier. So we, uh, that's musco lighting, and musco lighting kind of develops the, uh, lighting plan and lights switching for the field. And then they solicit competitive, uh, later install bids on our behalf and present it to us as kind of a turnkey solution using their products competitive.
Have they done work locally, they even have a state?
Uh, yes, they have done, uh, pretty much everything here in Southern Wisconsin. Uh, all of our existing lighting too, that is at stadium and showbird park from the late nineties is musco lighting. Uh, and they have, they have great reviews, obviously, technology and efficiency has come a long way since, uh, our stuff has come in, but, uh, it offers all the modern, uh, amenities efficiencies of, uh, any stadium, uh, pretty huge project.
I'd like to reinforce that, uh, the few hundred forty-two thousand dollars is listed here in the memo for the equipment and labor for the lighting is a portion of the overall baseball project. That portion and the rest of the project is, is paid for entirely by the private donation that, that was listed in, in recent donations that are coming up later in the board agenda. Um, so I'm going to reinforce with, with, uh, the board, with the audience here, the audience at home, that this is, we're able to do this because of your extremely generous gift, uh, and that there isn't any district funds that are going into any of this project.
I'll go ahead and move, uh, to authorize a little bit around the project, musco lighting and deeper power to proceed with baseball field lighting project at Milton High School.
Second. Thank you, John. His motion is seconded by Ed, as you just heard, to proceed with the, uh, lighting and, uh, field, uh, project of the baseball field. Questions from anyone? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you, Stephen. It clearly passes. And then we will get to C, Sarah is making her way up. This is discussion and possible action of twenty-four, twenty-five Milton Middle School Extended Field Trip Request. Where are we going, Ms. Swensky?
Well, okay, we go to DCs. Who have been, who have been around for a while knows this used to happen. Been quite a few years since it's been entertaining and it was brought to my attention over the winter, and we've been, and working behind the scene. Initially, we proposed, uh, for students in Texas, that it would be a flying trip. And after looking at some of the options, it changed into a bus trip, so we reshared the information with families just to get some interest, and we actually gained six students by switching from a flight to a bus. So ten is initially here, what the proposal is, forty students who are interested, six checked.
So the, the cost is fully paid or by the family?
Yeah.
And did the cost go down when you made it a bus trip, or was there, was the same cost, it was just flying versus?
And this is not a hundred percent finalized numbers until we have the, that number of students are able to collect the costs.
When was the last, when was the last time that the board did a?
It's a while.
It was a long time. One of the ones here.
I'm going to move to, uh, approve the Milton Middle School Extended Field Trip Request as presented.
Second. Jennifer's motion, seconded by Rick to approve the field trip request to the middle school kids. Questions?
I think it's great to have it back, is it only middle school, with, high school's a separate trip?
Yes, it's only eight, right?
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor of approval of field trip request, please say aye. Aye, opposed? All right. That concludes new business. Ms. Lanier, S A is our staff and report. Would she have a complicated version of included also? Just a motion to approve the staff and reports. Second. Uh, Rick's motion is seconded by John to approve both the staff and report and his update. Questions from anyone? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye. And opposed? Thank you, that clearly passes. And then the gifts and donations that Rich alluded to.
Motion to approve the gifts and donations with gratitude.
And next, motion is seconded by Tracy to approve our gifts and donations, of course, with our gratitude. Uh, questions from anyone? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye and opposed? Thank you, that also clearly passes. Here up to me, it's Mr. Damon.
Our next regularly scheduled, uh, board meeting is coming up in two weeks, that will be on August twenty-sixth, that is also our annual meeting, on, on May ninth, twenty-sixth. Um, we are, we will need to schedule a H R committee meeting for sometime in September. We could look at possible dates for that now, or we could send out some old preach, that is, that's a month away, so we need to schedule it, so if it's all right with the H R committee, we can send out some different possible dates and get some plans and dates back from around that. Um, Harvey sent out an email to the finance committee members to have a finance committee meeting sometime, uh, next week to, in preparation for the annual meeting. Uh, we're looking at your August nineteenth, twentieth, or twenty-first, so you can either go to that in right now, or finance committee members can respond to that email. John replied saying that Tuesday or Wednesday, the twentieth or the twenty-first, after five thirty P M would work best for him.
I think you all will be nice.
I heard those were Tuesday, Mike, or better, that's, that's okay.
And Tuesday, the twentieth at five thirty, Ross will be at that meeting, you're going to thumbs up Ross, so we will get that in fresh out Tuesday, August twentieth at five thirty P M for finance committee. And then we also have, uh, a possible forum on the board, we're answering upcoming starter school year events, so probably will host these. On August nineteenth, we have our new staff induction breakfast and welcome, uh, at Milton High School. On August twenty-first, our all-staff welcome back convocation at Milton High School. And then on August twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, we have our open houses at our various schools. So all board members are invited to those. Um, should have got an email with the dates, times, and locations on each of those. Um, this is a window board meeting, but post those in case there is a forum on the board.
Just a manual meeting here?
Manual meeting will be here. We, we, uh, likely will open up and go this way for that in case we have a larger crowd, uh, but it'll be here at the district office.
Rich, would there be a major benefit to try and get more and more focus remedied in the next couple of weeks, just to kind of summarize our decisions tonight?
I think, uh, like Ross and I talked, uh, through, what we'd like to do is not restrict our information meetings and our next meetings to just the community focus group. We want to make sure that now that the board has, has landed on a, a question to bring to the voters, we want to have community listening sessions that are open to anyone. I think a lot of our community focus group folks have said that they'd be interested in attending those community listening sessions, so, uh, what we're looking at is looking for something in that first week of September, having a community focus, for that community focus group, but a community listening session that's open to anyone in the community so that, uh, those folks in the focus group, but also anyone else is able to attend.
I can reveal some dates for that, can you be honest with me, first, because I can't remember?
It is, and yes.
All right, are we good on dates? Okay, and as Rich alluded to, we also are not completing a closed session, so I would entertain a motion pursuant to a San San Statute, section nineteen point eight-five, sub-one and sub-D, that is to consider specific appropriations of probation, extended supervision or parole, or considering strategy for crime detection or prevention, i.e., to discuss and take action if appropriate regarding the district's safety plan, specifically our reunification method, is our topic. Oh, sorry. All right, voted by John, seconded by, I'm sorry, by Rick, and seconded by John. Um, where am I at left here? Ed, that's, and Jennifer?
Yes.
Joe is yes, Rick?
Yes.
Uh, Tracy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Ed? We are in executive session. We are not returning to open session, so thank you for joining us. Safe travels.